I feel like the room's listening.
So there, the board is going to put your nine flags.
All right, it is Monday, June 5th, 6:30 PM. We're going to call this workshop the Lewisville City Council to Order. We do have a quorum. The microphones are live and they pick up everything, even if you're sitting along the back wall. So enjoy. Tonight's workshop session, item one is the discussion of regular agenda items and consent agenda items. So we'll go ahead and start off with item one on the consent agenda. A little minutes. Item two, interlevel with Denton County. Item five.
It is.
It's more the banners.
It's a lot of lights.
This is a lot of lights, including the I-35 corridor.
Okay.
I mean, that alone.
Yeah, apparently, apparently we're responsible for this.
They can't miss a dang gum huge fire truck.
Wow. Item six. Want to take a moment on that to thank all the folks involved. And the same with item seven.
What process, what do we know the process that we're going to use to ensure that the work is out to the people that need it the most?
Actually, we're going to have on number seven, Ashley's going to have a few slides to talk through kind of what the program is going to look like in that.
Okay, great.
Are we going to do that during workshop?
We're going to do it today, right now, if you guys are available.
Ashley, you want to do that now since we're talking about item seven?
We're very excited to be bringing this to you guys. So quick background on our senior rental assistance program. City staff has been meeting regularly with a group of seniors here that live at one of our Evergreens who are raising awareness about the rent increase, especially for our seniors that are on fixed incomes. And so we brought that to the city council and we were directed to create a program to provide some rental assistance for our seniors. So we have 123,000 and $400 in city funds made available for this program. So we have been working with United Way, Denton County, and CCA to administer these funds. So we've been working out the program with them and getting those agreements together. So that's what we're bringing to you guys tonight. So they will administer the program. We've, as the city, with our IT department, have created an application that's as simple as possible. We don't need to get complicated with these funds or with this rental assistance. So our IT team has been really amazing helping us do that. And they are going to be pulling from the same pot of funding. We're not going to have this amount for United Way or this amount for CCA. They're going to be working together constantly so that we are all working together to make sure that our seniors are provided assistance. And then this is specifically, like I said, to our low to moderate income seniors. And this is like a gap program. So if their rent was one X amount of dollars and then their new lease was increased by so many dollars, we will be covering that difference over for the remainder of their So a quick overview of our process. Like I said, we've been working with IT to create a Laserfish application utilized by United Way and CCA. Minimal information. We don't need a lot of details. That's something that's a challenge with other nonprofit applications is that there's a lot of documentation that's required. So the minimal that we can request, the better. So they will complete the online application, but United Way is offering to provide a part-time staff person to be housed at our Lewisville library to, for certain set amount of hours, two days a week, to help those in need with assistance on applying. And then we also have partnered with DCTA to get day-go zone passes. So we'll go to the Evergreens to drop some off there. We'll have some at the library so that if they need assistance or transportation to the library for that, we have some opportunities for them. And then we, as staff, will receive the application, do that initial eligibility review before we send it out to United Way or CCA. So once we determine eligibility, we'll send it out to those and then they will do the remaining of that process. They'll reach out to the client, they'll reach out to the landlord or management company to have that proof of increased of rent. And then, then we will, we will be doing reimbursements. So they'll be submitting monthly reports to us and then we'll be reimbursing them. Here's some quick snapshots of our application. These are the initial eligibility questions. So if they say that they've received assistance from this program before, it ends right there. So the Laserfish has been great in how we can make this as simple as possible for them.
But this program hasn't been.
But if they got money, like let's say they got money the first month.
Okay. Yeah. So if they've received assistance for one apartment, they move to another apartment and try to apply again, that would not be an eligible application. So that leads me to my question, sorry.
It's okay.
So if somebody is kind of in the middle of their lease or maybe at the very end of their lease, how do we, I mean, how do we handle that? Because if somebody's got a couple of months left. So what we would cover, there's a couple of months left, but then United Way has housing navigation. So they would then refer that client to the housing navigator to help them find another place that may be a little bit more affordable for them.
Okay. Yeah. So that's, you know, the hard part for us in creating this program is we don't want to create an expectation that we're going to keep providing this type of funding. This is really a one-time opportunity for us to have this funding for them. And so really the assistance, that's even greater, which I think, I think you've had some discussions about wanting to have senior navigators and things like that, housing navigators, is that when these seniors come in and they sit down with that United Way person who's helping them with this form, if it looks like they are not in a sustainable situation, they will then lead them to the housing navigator in United Way who will then try to find them another option so that they can be more long-term. Now, that's their decision whether or not they want to choose that or not, but at least we're providing them that assistance.
Okay.
I have a question. I know this has been started from the Evergreen people. Is this available to others?
Yes.
Are they, are they being aware of it?
Yes, so we will, any senior that lives in Lewisville that is renting is eligible to at least start that initial application for this. So we're working, we've created a flyer also. So CCA plans on focusing on their Golden Angel program. So I don't believe everyone in their Golden Angel program is, lives at Evergreen, but that's a start. We're going to work with the Evergreens, but we're also working with CCA and their clients who will then help spread the word. And then United Way also has a list from their emergency rental assistance program that may not have been able to get assistance through that. So we'll have them reach out to those clients as well. Just another quick snapshot of our application. Right after this section is the proof of income. So we'll have them type in their income, but we also have them upload some proof of income as well. So that's where the library is going to be really beneficial. So if they can't scan something in, they can at least go to the library, use that business center right there to get some assistance with scanning. So next steps, we will, after agreements get finalized and approved tonight, we will open the application on June 8th, which is this Thursday. And then United Way staff will start on June 13th at the library, two days a week, Tuesdays and Wednesdays, for a few hours those two days. That's it.
I do want to say that just to tout our partnership with CCA as well as to United Way, it wasn't clear that this money was, there was enough resources to get this spent in the community. And really, we brought all of the key stakeholders together and sat down in a room and said, how do we solve this problem together? And they really came to the table, as well as Ashley and her team and creativity in that.
Great job. Really excited about it.
I appreciate the simplification of the process.
Yes, I do.
Simpler the better, for sure.
Well, simpler is faster, right? So, awesome. Thank you.
Awesome.
Anything else on item seven?
Yes, sir.
Item eight. I have several items for that conversation. We can do that out of the dais. But we've worked together to put teams and assign things and whatnot, so we'll go with that. Let's see, next up. Actually, I can kind of walk through that a little bit here. I put William and Bob together on one board. I put Brandon and Kristin together on the next.
Always. You're always putting them together.
And I've got you with Patrick. And we'll need to be done with this by the 19th. So we're doing, Jennifer's done a great job. She's pulled together all the resources for the new applicants and existing applicants that need to rotate perhaps to a different board.
Do you have that group, do you want us to?
Yeah, we're going to do CDVG for Troyer and Meredith, Library Board for Troyer and Meredith, Parks Board, Parks and Library Development Corps, and TERES four. And I'll give you a copy of all this.
Okay.
I've got Jones and Green with Design Review, Old Town Design Review, Planning and Zoning, TERES two, ZBOA, and the LGC. And then I've got Kate and Kelly with Arts, Animal Services, TERES one and TERES three. So in the backup information, you're going to have demographics, ethnicity, residential district, all of that information. So you'll know what I would ask is that as you guys go through your process and select that you let me know or let the city secretary's office know. That way, if there's duplication between the groups, we can catch that before we get to council and maybe make some adjustments. Questions? Any board that you're like, man, I really want that board instead? Then we have two items or three for closed?
Three.
Okay. So we have three items for closed session. And if there's nothing else, then we have item two or item B for the workshop, which is presented by Utilities Manager Caitlin Herron regarding the landfills in Lewisville.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for letting me be here today to talk to you about the history of our landfills and the future of our landfills as well. I also want to thank Mark and Jerry from Republic for being here and Stephen from Waste Management. They were all instrumental, among others, and Shane from Farmers Branch in gathering the information that I didn't have for this presentation. So to get started, we're going to go over some general information about landfills, just so we're using common terminology. And then we'll get into some history on the landfills. And I just wanted to, because I'm guilty of this, the different names for the different landfills. So we have DFW landfill, which is sometimes referred to as Waste Management, Camelot and Farmers Branch, and then Lewisville landfill, which is our construction landfill. So this is just a general overview of what goes into a landfill. So when you're looking at a landfill space, first you want to start with that liner, that base layer. So you want to make sure that nothing that you're putting in that landfill is then getting into the soil, the groundwater, things like that. So you've got your liners, and then you've got your filters. So a municipal solid waste landfill will produce a leachate. So that's that, as material breaks down, it's the liquids that come out that is collected and then it needs to be disposed of. So the two landfills in town that do have this, they have leachate tanks that then connect to our municipal, our, yep, our wastewater system. So they are permitted by our pretreatment program so that it's being tested so we know that the wastewater plant can handle what is coming. Also, with that groundwater monitoring, you have groundwater monitoring wells so that you're making sure you can test and make sure that nothing is leaving that landfill area. And then as you're building up your landfill, you have what are called cells. And these are your active working areas where waste is being dumped. And then it is that growth in cells that gives you the heightened slope of the landfill. Landfills also produce gas, so largely methane gas along with others, and that is your gas collection system. So it needs to be collected and either simply burned, burned off, or it can be transferred into energy. So you've got electricity generation, or you can purify that methane and do renewable natural gas. So just some brief background on the landfill regulations. I found this interesting. It was as recent as 1965 when we even began regulating the handling of waste throughout the state. So in '76, the Resource Conservation and Recovery Act, RICRA, was passed, and that finally banned the open dumping of waste. In '84, Texas adopted the Texas Solid Waste Disposal Act, and they kind of split the oversight between the Health Department and the Texas Water Commission. Eventually, that all was consolidated in the Texas Natural Resource Conservation Commission, or TNRCC, which later turned into the TCEQ, or Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, who currently permits our landfills. So types of landfills. So I've already mentioned municipal solid waste landfills. So we have, in the state, four types of landfills. So we've got type one landfills that accepts waste from municipal solid waste, special waste, some non-hazardous industrial waste. So for us, that's DFW landfill and Camelot landfill. Type fours are, they can only accept brush, construction, and demolition waste. So here, that's Lewisville landfill. Interestingly enough, the other two types are not type two and type three. It is actually type one AE and type four AE. It's an arid exemption, so it doesn't apply here. But all of these are regulated by the TCEQ. So the life of a landfill. I find this extremely fascinating because there's so much that goes into it. The operational life is the next to last part of this. So just to even prepare for a landfill, you've got to know what you need to dispose of. You've got information on potential sites, where is it appropriate, hydrogeological information, things like that. Not every plat, or plot is a good place for a landfill. Then you've got to design the filling area, you've got your design features. Do you need leachate control, gas monitoring, monitoring wells, other things like that. And then you prepare your design package, such to your regulatory entity and to your city that you're proposing to have this in. Then you finally get into the operational period. So about 30 to 50 years of operational life before you move into post-closure, or closure and post-closure, which I'll talk about next. So our landfills will all close with waste in place or closure as a landfill. When they do reach closure, they have to have a closure plan. Now, this period for planning for closure takes about 18 to 20 months. And they've got to basically come up with a plan for how they're going to monitor it through that post-closure period. I included this on here with how to dispose of any hazardous waste. This does not apply to Lewisville. I just put this for historical context on how landfills manage. So we do not have hazardous waste at our three landfills. So you need to have plans for final cover and erosion protection and monitoring. Then you can finally enter that post-closure period. So there, here, because that landfill is still going to be producing leachate and gas, you do have to monitor, you have to monitor your liners, your final covers. There'd be settling, so if you need to add new cover, things like that, you've got your leachate collection, your gas systems. So for a type one landfill, this can last about 30 years on average. There are instances where it can be shorter if it stops producing earlier. It's not that common, but it could also go longer. So that period is very dependent, but averages about 30 years. Type four, since it's construction demolition waste, it's not trash and things that are biodegrading, it's a much shorter period, about five years for that post-closure period. So, pull this. What happens after post-closure? So the interesting thing about our three landfills is that, one, we have three, and then none of them are owned by the city. So this is very dependent on agreements with the landowners and the owners of the landfill. But depending on those factors, a closed landfill can be turned into a nature park, recreational area, sports fields, commercial uses. But while the landfill does continue to produce gas, there's limited use for the hill itself. And actually, you can see in the back of that picture, those black spikes, those are gas monitoring wells. So while it's still active, the hill is usually off limits. So this is a picture of Westside landfill in Fort Worth, which we had the opportunity to go tour, and I know Claire will talk a little bit more at the end. And then this is Pierceall Park in San Antonio. This one was after post-closure because they turned it into a city park where they have splash pads and workout, they have outdoor like workout area with gym. And then you can see people walking on the hill in the back. They've turned it into kind of like nature trails and things. So getting into our landfill. So DFW landfill, it's a type one landfill on about 845 acres, with 316 of that being actual permitted space. And I want to thank GIS for helping me with these maps. So this is the parcel outline, and it also shows the improvements that were made by Waste Management through that contract we have with them. So Waste Management took ownership in 1978. They have a host fee, just like all three of our landfills actually all have the same host fee at $1.20 per ton. What that host fee is, is a monthly fee paid to the city per ton for revenue generating material received by the landfill. So in 2019, or sorry, in 2016, we collected as much as 1.9 million. That has been reduced, obviously, over time. This last year was around 400,000 as the landfill is reaching closure. So in 2022, they did close to all but about two loads per day of our biosolids from the wastewater treatment plant and Waste Management contracted waste. So it's close to the public, so that has significantly reduced. And I'll talk more about the estimated closure date here in a second. So they started accepting waste in '72. I wanted to point this out. In 1986, they installed their first landfill gas-to-energy turbine. And that, so they have been producing energy with their methane gas. In the beginning of this year, they actually reached out to us with a proposal to switch from energy to renewable natural gas. So we got to tour their skyline facility and see what they were doing there. All but two of their vehicles are being fueled by the plant's methane, or the landfill's methane. So they are actually in the process of doing this now, and they'll be connecting to the Atmos pipeline. So estimated closure at the end of 2024, however, Waste Management has told me that could stretch to 2026 as they are significantly slowing what they're accepting. You've got some settling, they're finding room, so they think they can stretch that out, but sometime soon. I wanted to point out with the contract obligations, this first part, you'll see this kind of continue with the other two as well. So in their contract with the city, they give $43,000 a year to keep those beautiful and then $50,000 a year to city events. They're a bit unique because when this was originally agreed upon, they were both the land, the agreement was both for the landfill host agreement and hauling. So when they sold the hauling contract to Republic, that $50,000 a year actually went to that hauling contract. So, but I wanted to point that out, that $43 a year in the contract is $43 a year while they're actively accepting waste. So that will eventually, eventually stop. But there's other benefits that they have provided through that contract, like road construction, traffic signals, and a five-foot sidewalk for the Dalhumbert Trail.
They also recently, can go back to the other slide, they did just recently, I wanted to tout our partnership with them, is they donated $375,000 over three years to assist with landscaping project on Heburn, which is one of our parks projects, I think now that, and we're planning to work on that project in a few more years.
And so the future with DFW landfill, upon closure, in the contract, it says that we've developed completed excavation areas to a park-like setting reasonably acceptable to the city. So this is something that we can be in talks with about what that will look like, and I think Claire will talk a little bit more about that. Camelot. So Camelot landfill is our second type one landfill. It's a property of about 459 acres with 300, or 236 of that being permitted space. They began accepting waste in 1979. The city of Farmers Branch owns the landfill and Republic manages the operations. So they also have that $1.20 per ton host fee. We've collected as much as 1.4 million in 2021, and they have an estimated lifetime of about 25 more years. So I don't have it on here, this is a fun fact that came from Eric Ferris, was that that property used to be two parcels. One was owned by Highland Park with the plans for a landfill for them and Farmers Branch. They ended up not moving forward, sold it to Farmers Branch. And then all of this happened before it was even in the city limits in Lewisville. So it's kind of interesting. But they began accepting waste in 1980. In 1998, they contracted with Trinity Waste, which was an allied waste partner, and allied and Republic merged. That's how Republic is managing that facility. And so, yeah, 2054 estimated closure. For contract obligations, they also have, they have what's called an equalization fee. It's $93,000 a year. Equalization meaning equal to what the other landfills are doing. So that's your $43,000 a year to KLB and $50,000 for city events. They had $200,000 that came to the city for the construction of the intersection at 121 and Huffines. And the other part I want to point out, this is subject to TCEQ approval, but it is in the contract that they would convey to Lewisville a 20-foot, 25-foot wide easement along the perimeter of the landfill within 12 months of the completion of Corporate Drive. And then for the future of Camelot, it's in the contract that they will, including the post-closure period, Farmers Branch will landscape the non-active slopes through the establishment of native grasses, flowering plants as part of vegetative cover. So it's kind of keeping that area green. And then last but not least is Lewisville landfill. This is our type four landfill. It's on 337 acres. It began accepting waste in 1986, and it started its life as a sand and gravel mining operation before it was a landfill. This one is owned by Republic Services and has that host fee of $1.20 per ton, where we've collected as much as 751,000 in 2017. And that has varied a bit, and I'll talk about that on the next slide. And they have approximately 36 more years to go. So what I wanted to point out here was, some of you may remember this, back in 2018, they reached out to us about mothballing the landfill. Now, what that means is they were going to cut back operations to as little as they can to be considered still open and not have to enter into closure period. So that was about one load per quarter. So the plan was for that to go for 10 years. Back in 2022, they needed to reopen. And this is kind of how it's interesting, how the three landfills all kind of relate to each other. So what happened in 2022 is when Waste Management closed to non-contracted waste. So everything had to go then to Camelot. Camelot has a 5% growth cap per year imposed by Farmers Branch to try to extend the life of that landfill for their residents. So in order to relieve the burden on Camelot, they had to reopen DFW landfill to divert what they could over so it kind of maintains the balance. So I wanted to point that out with them. So they have done a lot of road construction in the area around them, from college to railroad and Valley Ridge to Business 121. In their contract, they are supposed to design a trail from Trinity Trail on the eastern side of the landfill, so kind of building into that park's master plan. They've done some other beautification, like the eight-foot-high private screening wall on 121, just to kind of help with that first view into the city. They've got that screening wall. Something unique in this contract, so this is for the city, not for residents, but the city has free disposal of demolition, construction, landscaping, or brush debris collect along our right-of-way for the life of the landfill. And that has helped a lot with the disposal costs. They have the same, roughly, I don't know if that is in the contract, it's $42,999.6, but they're $3,000 a year to KLB and $50,000 to special community events. And then free disposal for significant storm events. And then similar to Farm, yeah, Camelot landfill, Farmers Branch, and throughout the life of the landfill and post-closure to keep the slopes vegetated. And I'll pass that to Claire.
Can you just, yeah, can you stand up so you can advance it for me? So Mayor, Council, really the reason why we brought this to you is we mainly started this project over a year ago because we wanted, we had a lot of turnover in staff. We wanted to ensure that we had continuity of understanding of the whole history of landfills, what were in the contracts. So it was really mainly for staff to begin with. But then we knew that there were, we have been through, you know, battles along the way, litigation that some of you may not have been privy to, and so, but also just knowing the historical component. So we wanted to let you guys know. But then also wanted to make sure you guys realize, and the public realize, how these landfills, although right now, when active, people may, they're a necessary thing for communities, but people may be like, well, why do we have landfills in Lewisville? The ultimate goal is to turn this into our green centerpiece. So our green centerpiece, you know, our vision, council's vision, is to ultimately have the entire center of our community be nature. And so these landfills play an important role in those as they go offline, converting those into parkland and natural areas. Can you go to the next slide? Things to think about. So, you know, we talked about, if you look at Bob Hope's nose, the green part right in the middle of that, you know, important part for there is right next door to that is a bunch of borrowed bits, that whole pink area. So when that landfill goes offline, those are the areas that don't have, that is not the hillside. Those areas could be turned into natural areas to look at and view. And then we strategically bought that other property, Bob Hope's nose property, so that future trails can look out on that beautiful, beautiful land. So we've been very strategic in acquisition of property as well as knowing kind of what's going to come offline. It will take a long time for some of these, but it's still beneficial. Go to the next slide. These are some pictures of that, of the landfill that was closed on the Westside landfill in Fort Worth, just to give you an idea of kind of what level of restoration they do. Go to the next one, too. I think there's one more.
Yep.
Picture of a beautiful flower. And so I think that was it.
Yep.
And we wanted to see if you guys had any questions. We have a couple of minutes left.
We have a couple of minutes left, yes.
Yep.
Great presentation.
Okay.
I do want to thank Caitlin because she came in knowing very little about the history, and she literally became a historian for a good year. She went through files and hard files and read through everything and put together the pieces, talked to all the experts that are in this room.
the pieces, talked to all the experts that are in this room, so I want to thank Caitlin. She's done a great job.
Joe pulled all the plugs, too, so I don't know.
And Joe.
Very informative. Just, and as a, it was very timely, because I actually, I was, there was a little cross tournament at Rower Park this weekend, one of the little kids asked my husband if the landfill, he said, is that a volcano?
Oh, no.
So now, we know. We know all the history.
There you go.
Thank you.
They are, they are amazing pieces of engineering, and I want to thank the staff from Republic and Waste Management for being here. And of course, to Farmers Branch for Shane and his time, I know he's been very involved in that part of the process. So if you guys could please extend thanks to your teams, you guys play an important part of our city. It's not the prettiest part, but it's, it's one of the most important, so thank you for all of that. With that, I think we need to go into regular session. And this workshop is now closed. All right. Good evening. It is Monday, June fifth, and it is seven oh-two PM. We're going to call this meeting of the Lewisville City Council to order. First up on the agenda is the invocation with Councilmember Cade.
Join me in a moment of silent contemplation, please. Thank you.
Please join me in the pledges to our flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. Next up, we have a presentation of the Maurice Strickland Awards, and this is going to be by our city manager, Claire Powell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm not used to being at this podium. Maurice Strickland was hired by the City of Lewisville in nineteen eighty-six and retired in 2011 as an operations supervisor over utility line maintenance. His tenure with the city was exemplified by quality service and customer-first attitude that set the finest example for his peers and employees. Shortly after his retirement, Maurice succumbed to his cancer. As a tribute to his service and reminder of the high standards he set for the organization, the City Manager's Award, given to exemplary employees, was renamed in his honor in 2012. I'm authorized by our policies to give up to two awards, hold on, two awards a year. So this year, I can tell you it was a hard decision to make. We, as you guys know, we have exceptional employees. They're all great. Every single person in this room is a top hitter. So it was very difficult, but there were two this year that stood out above the rest. And so I'm pleased to, to give these awards, and I think they've brought their families as well, so I'm really excited that their families get to hear how exceptional they are, too. So I'm going to first start with Chris Presley, and I have everything written out, but I'm just going to tell you, tell you a little bit about Chris. Chris, why don't you come on up here? Chris Presley is exemplary for an exceptional employee in Lewisville. Chris has, he basically is over top of facilities, but he does so much more. He also is our ADA coordinator, so let me tell you, this man, to be able to understand what people experience in a wheelchair, he has literally gotten on a wheelchair and followed them through Thrive, to understand what that feels like, to understand their perspective. I don't know a lot of employees in many other cities that go ahead and do that. But on top of that, Chris has just recently, this last year, been in char, put in charge, especially with Eric Ferris retiring, of minding the gaps on our new public safety facility. So with the Tittle McFadden Public Safety Center, Chris is basically in a room full of executives that are basically in charge of the architect firm, in charge of burn construction, in charge of the secure, you know, the cybersecurity stuff for the building, police chief, fire chief, and let me tell you, this man holds his own. Absolutely. You know, he started off just talking about air conditioning units, I remember, and then we were like, hey, you need to have a seat at this table, you've got a lot more to add. And he's been exceptional, and I'm so grateful to have you on our team. So with that, I wanted to, to give you the Maurice Strickland City Manager's Award to Chris Presley. Thank you. I'm trying to get him to say something, but he doesn't want to.
I will. Thank you so much for allowing this award and the support that the City Council gives to the City of Lewisville. Without your support, we couldn't do our jobs to the ability that we do them, so really thank you. And, and again, having great leadership within the city, and me being able to, to come to these, to these just mentors, everyone here and everyone in that room, to help and guide me through this situation. I just, I couldn't do what I do without the support and the team that, that we've built here, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris.
I'd like to say, Claire, for those that don't know, he is second generation City of Lewisville. His father, Paul Presley, first generation, he raised him right.
Some of my best words.
That's right.
I also forgot to tell everyone who nominated him, so we open it up to directors, and directors can accept things from their managers as well. So his manager, Francis Mascherinas, nominated him, but also Liz Plaster nominated, nominated him as well. So you probably didn't know that. Okay, second up, as nominated by Shu Nguyen and Dave Urb, is Heather Potiak. Do you want to come on, come on up, Heather? So Heather is an exceptional member of our finance department. She is one heck of a brainiac, loves attention to detail, and I know I can trust anything that she gives me is done with a hundred percent accuracy. So she was instrumental in making sure our financials worked with our fresh annexation of Castle Hills. So with Castle Hills, if you think about it, we had multiple districts and multiple bank accounts. We had to sell debt, refinance debt that was out there, it was very complex, and she had to tie all of those finances together. So complex that we actually had to go out for a GFOA ruling on one of those. She's been instrumental from the beginning, even before we annexed, she was out there physically in the space, talking to the finance department, understanding how all the books worked, and how to make that transition smooth. So I will say, beyond just her incredible hard work, because I can tell you, it's been long hours this last year with our, with our annexation, while everyone else, a lot of the work ahead of time was, you know, like public services, we did a lot, all of our assessment early on, a lot of the backend work, everyone else was kind of like, okay, we're running this portion of the city, they were not. So they were in the soup all up this, all for, throughout this entire year, up until the audit was completed, which was a clean bill of health, thanks to, to Heather and her team. But other than that, Heather has been a delight to work with, and we are so proud to have you on our team. So with that, if I can get this up, to Heather Potiak, congratulations.
Yeah, I can't imagine how tough it is to pick from the talent that we have within this organization, so thank you both for being here. Thank you so much for sharing your gifts and your talents with the city and with our residents, it's, it's great. Item D, Visitor Citizens Forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the City Council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. City Secretary, do we have any requests?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Item E, Consent Agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card or e-comment must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Do we have any comment cards or requests?
Yes, sir.
All right. City Council, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council, please vote. Consent agenda passes unanimously. Item F, Regular Hearing. Discussion and consideration of appointment process to various city boards, commissions, and committees. On June thirtieth, various terms of office on the city's boards, commissions, and committees will be expiring. Those positions have been identified and current appointees notified. The Board's Commissions and Committee Appointment Process Electronic Notebook has been created for City Council's review. Data sheets for members requesting reappointment and all new applicants have been included in the electronic book. City Council will need to identify interview teams and determine which team will interview which board, commission, or committee. And it is recommended that the City Council proceed with the appointment process to the various city boards, commissions, and committees, identify interview teams, interview dates, and determine which team will interview which board, commissions, or committee. I had spent some time with the city secretary's office to identify the teams and the committees, so as such, I have Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Meredith and Councilmember Troyer assigned to review the appointments and place folks for the following boards: Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee, Library Board, Park Board, Lewisville Parks and Library Development Corporation, 4B, and the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone, number four. The second team, I have Mayor Pro Tem Jones and Councilwoman Green. They will be reviewing the committees of Old Town Design Review Committee, Planning and Zoning Commission, Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone, number two, Zoning Board of Adjustment, Lewisville Local Government Corporation. And team number three, I have Councilwoman Cade and Councilmember Kelly, reviewing the Arts Advisory Board, Animal Services Advisory Committee, Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone, number one, and Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone, number three. We do have backup information containing demographics, residing district for existing board members and new applicants, just as additional information, as you guys go through your process. There are also Excel spreadsheets for existing board members and new applicants, so you'll want to take a look at those as well. What we do have this year are several board members that are terming off of their existing board, and they do have interest in other boards, which will provide some rotational opportunities. So we can talk with that, specifically with Jennifer and the city secretary's office, to have a conversation, as well as myself, to kind of look at those and where there might be overlap. I think the biggest thing that we need to do on this process that has worked really well in the past is to have selections make their way back to me or the city secretary's office, so we can identify if there's any duplication. We do have occasionally folks that are, of course, outstanding members of the community that want us to be, want to be giving back more, and so they end up getting placed on two or three boards, and that's, that's, we want to share the wealth, so want to make sure that that's handled. With that, I'll entertain a motion to set that list of teams, and if somebody wants that list, I can hand it to them.
Do you, we need to read the list?
Liz, do we need to read that into the record?
The whole thing?
I got it in purple.
That's great.
Who's doing it?
Might as well stay with our colors.
Pass it down.
Tag, you're it.
Oh, looks like you're it.
All right.
I saw you raise your hand, that's what, that's what I thought I saw.
I was raising to pass it to Chris. Mr. Mayor, I move that we appoint the following teams to select the boards and commissions: Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Meredith and Councilman Troyer for Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee, Library Board, Park Board, Lewisville Parks and Library Development Corporation, 4B, Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone, number four. Myself, Mayor Pro Tem Jones, and Councilwoman Green for Old Town Design Review Committee, Planning and Zoning Commission, Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone, number two, Zoning Board of Adjustment, and the Lewisville Local Government Corporation. And finally, Councilwoman Cade and Councilman Kelly over Arts Advisory Board, Animal Services Advisory Committee, Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone, number one, and Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone, number three.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item G, Reports. Reports about items of community interest regarding which no action will be taken. Council, we do have the quarterly investment report from January one, 2023, to March thirty-first, 2023, in your packet, so you'll want to take some time to review that. Councilmember Troyer, would you mind?
The only, excuse me. I guess since I can't talk, I don't have a report.
Fair enough, fair enough. If you come up with something, I'll circle back, okay? City Attorney, City Secretary. And our lovely Police Department, want to thank you all for being here, appreciate the support and, and having your eyes here.
No report, Mayor.
I do have one report.
I was just going to say, how was Vegas?
Oh, Vegas was great. We, I attended a conference, and we made some really good business connections, and hoping to bring some things forward to you all soon. But on another note, I wanted to mention our Lewisville Business Connection series. It's a four-part series in partnership with the Lewisville Chamber of Commerce, and what we're doing is that on Wednesday from eight-thirty to about nine o'clock, we are going to have Brent Augustine from North Central Texas Small Business Development Center come and talk. And so for all our small business folks, please come out and, and see us, and come and enjoy the event, and learn more about the resources that are available to you here in Lewisville.
Thank you. No report. Thank you, sir.
Mayor, City Council members, park fans, a couple of things I want, actually, three things I want to talk about. So just beware, our solarization along Garden Ridge Parkway will start at the end of this week and move into next week, so you'll see big plastic tarps going out on some of the medians, so we'll be killing all of the green matter there, so we can test to see what the best method for introducing our prairie grasses into these areas will be. So just know it'll look a little bit different out there, and we'll have some social media for y'all. Also, on June seventeenth, at ten AM, we're going to have the grand opening for the Old Town Splash Park. We hope that everyone can join us and come see this great asset. And then one that we're pretty proud of, with the ten-minute walk to a park, if you'll remember when we started that program back in 2017, our ratio was in the low sixties, it was about sixty-one percent. And we wrote a grant along with the Planning Department and Economic Development Department to go get some additional training to see how we could bridge that gap from the National Recreation and Park Association, Trust for Public Land, and Urban Land Institute. And we set a goal by 2025 to have an eighty-five percent ratio. Well, our first jump was from sixty to sixty-eight when we signed that agreement with LISD to use some of the schoolyard parks as public parks during out-of-school time. And over the last year or so, the Planning Department, the IT Department, and Jose Martinez, who's our administrative analyst with the Parks Department, have been working with the Trust for Public Land to increase our mapping. You know, we've dedicated extra spaces, figure out where we have better connections. And last week, the Trust for Public Land just published their new updated ratio, and we're at seventy-seven percent right now. So you can find that update on our performance metrics dashboard. When we go to dedicate and, and open Glory Park, we'll get to eighty-one percent, which puts us in real reach of getting to that 2025 goal of eighty-five percent. So thank you for your support for that.
Thank you.
No report, Mayor.
Thanks, sir.
Lake Level Report, Mayor and Council, we are at five twenty-one point seven one feet, that's about ninety-eight point six percent full.
Thank goodness for a little rain.
Last time we were here, I mentioned that we would make an announcement on the selection of our Public Services Director, and after a month-long exercise, four interview panels, presentation, a couple of tests, and we have made offer and secured Aaron Russell, who is currently the Assistant City Manager for Weatherford, and he'll, he will start on June twenty-first. He's got two decades of service in, in, in Public Works, he's been a Public Works Director for thirteen years, and we're looking forward to his arrival, so you'll see him very, very soon.
Thank you, sir. Gina.
Mayor, Council, we have Coffee with Cops coming up this Saturday, the tenth, and that will be at Sophia's Kitchen at twenty-five forty King Arthur Boulevard, Suite 107, from nine to eleven.
That's great. Thank you, sir. Councilmember Green?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Jones?
I have a few things here. The one thing that popped up this week is Youth Action Council. The one thing that popped up this week is Youth Action Council is seeking local teens. The application is due by August first. You can go on the city website and, and find that out. And also, the Sounds of Lewisville starts tomorrow, so get out there and go listen to some good music. And the final thing, I just got pinched, so I'll, I'll read as fast as I can. So I'm not assaulted anymore, chief.
Pitching him.
We also have the Juneteenth celebration that is coming up, and I can't find the email right now, but that will be, there'll be a few events at the Grand, there'll be an event at the Grand on Wednesday, and we'll have a concert again on Friday with Don Diego and I believe it's Fingerprints is, is the jazz band that'll be playing. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Interesting name.
Stop hitting me, Ronnie, stop.
I didn't. Don't listen. Don't listen. Congratulations to all the, the graduates out there and, and to all the parents that are parents of the graduates that are out there. I'm ready to get the summer going.
Right? Summer's ready.
Yeah.
City Manager? Bob?
Councilman Jones mentioned Sounds of Lewisville, and that was the only thing I was going to bring up, so.
Awesome. I just wanted to let the Parks team know, I was out on Valley Ridge, taking an evening constitutional with my dog and my daughter, and was blown away by a lot of the new native plants that have been put in. Garden Ridge looks amazing. If you are curious about what kind of native, native plants, get your phone, take it with you, and get a nice close-up picture of any of the flowers that are going on, and usually a Google image search will pick up what it is, and then you can go figure out how to get one and put it in your own backyard or front yard. So there are some amazing stuff. They had Rattlesnake Master and Greg's Blue Mistflower, which I, Rattlesnake Master, I never really thought would see in city because that one's a little rare, so I'm excited for it. What's that? You have it in your yard? So there we go. Did we take it from your yard to put it? No. I have one in my, in my backyard, and I'm, I'm desperately trying to not drown it. So with that, we are going to go ahead and move into closed session in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section five-five-one point oh seven-two, Real Estate Property Acquisition, Section five-five-one point oh seven-four Personnel, Discussion of Election of Mayor Pro Tem and Deputy Mayor Pro Tem, and Section five-five-one point oh eight-seven, Economic Development, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations. Counsel, is there any action to be taken?
Mayor, I move to authorize the city manager or her designee to take all actions necessary to purchase the property located at two oh six West Main Street in Lewisville, Denton County, Texas, for five hundred thousand dollars, and the property located at two oh seven Elm Street in Lewisville, Denton County, Texas, for seven hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Counsel, I have a motion and a second. If you would, please, if you were in favor, vote aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we elect or select William Meredith as Mayor Pro Tem and Patrick Kelly as Deputy Mayor Pro Tem.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. There is no further action to be taken. We are adjourned. It is eight twenty-one PM.